Binghamton City Council Special Meeting Planning. This is in regards to the zoning changes over on the west side in Danny Cronce's district, Councilman Cronce's district. And we are allowing Susan Joyner, Rebecca Rathwell, Russell Maines, and Charlie Ackerman to speak tonight. And we'd like to be done by six please for the next meeting, so. You want to start out Danny, what this is all about?
Yes, this is for the C6. It is not the R3 overlay, it is the C6 legislation.
Okay, we forgot roll calling. I'm sorry.
Uh, Councilman Scrimgey's out due to military absence.
It's a committee meeting.
I'm not in committee. I don't have to.
What you do it. I'll do all of them, I guess. Uh, Councilman Lucas.
Present.
Uh, Councilman Cronce.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Pam Stratt.
Present.
Councilman Matso.
Present.
And President Scamble isn't here, he's out.
So, okay, now we'll get back to Councilman Cronce.
Alright. So I did this, it's in effect for the south of Maine from Chestnut to Oak Street and from Aries to the main street. And then it's for the north of Maine area, the north of Maine, between the train tracks and Front and, um, Cranville and whatnot. So, this...
So as it is on the current zoning map dated 2008?
No, it, right now, they're all, they're all R3 and R2 properties right now.
But the areas yours broke into, the ones that are highlighted, C6 on the zoning map?
Yeah, I did not get a chance to look at it, so hopefully they put it on there.
Not currently, no.
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 But it was on the map, which I had designed and had set forth a year ago when I looked to put this out. And, um, unfortunately, it's been held up and held up, so.
Is this going to, so your map, we include both sides of Ayers, both sides of Chestnut?
Yes, yes, it's needed on both sides. Um, and it's needed in the north of Maine. Um, uh, and literally all this is doing is removing, the C6 would make it a commercial residential area, which it still has to hold to the residential aesthetics. Um, it's, all it's doing is stating that there, there is a sixty-six percent density of living, of people in this district, which is very high. Um, it's only in here and a small part in the east side and Conrad side as well, which we have, which is also was on a map, which now nobody can find, which I'm still in pain of, I'm sorry about that.
Councilman Taylor.
I called, I called, but I didn't ask.
Yeah, no, I, I did have maps, like, a year ago for these, I already made out with, with the, um, with the plan.
Councilman Taylor?
Yeah, so I think the purpose of today's meeting, uh, was to really get a little bit more specific. Uh, you guys came a couple of weeks ago, talked a public comment, and I think that you were selected specifically for your, uh, elegance and also knowledge on how you talk about and the vision that you felt for the future of zoning here in the city of Binghamton. So I think we wanted to delve a little bit deeper into that at today's meeting. I think about the C6 specifically, so, you know, what sort of, uh, area you'd be interested in seeing?
Maybe the co, my understanding is, is that the proposed zoning amendments were put on the table for this meeting.
Right.
Not the C6.
That's correct, that's correct. So that would be the first thing, but also, uh...
Which is a very different piece of legislation.
Right. But, but, but...
This is a drawing point, I have a...
We tabled it so we could go over, is there some concerns about the legislation that was brought up for both?
For the west side.
But then also about, concerns about, you know, parking minimum requirements that were brought up, uh, concerns about affordable housing in the city of Binghamton, and what can we do to promote that?
Mm-hmm.
With zoning legislation, neighborhood concerns. Um, so I think that it, it would be prudent to maybe see if any of our guests today had specific concerns or recommendations that they had maybe, uh, thought through a little bit more, that they'd like to present to the council in terms of additions or changes, uh, to, to the proposed zoning legislation. Um, and then, you know, I as a council member have some questions as well, and I'm sure other, other co-council members.
One of the main concerns I, that I heard at the meeting was the functional family legislation. And I think that needs to be discussed first and see how we...
I think it was going to...
Right, so if the C6, if ma, if the main function of the C6 is just to eliminate the functional family legislation in a certain area of the city, it's probably prudent in that discussion to also evaluate the functional family legislation. Does it have any effect? Is it enforceable? What does it actually mean for the city? And is the C6 even required in that vein, or is it actually a, a discussion about a functional family law?
I can actually tell you that.
Can I interject? I know I'm merely the council, not, not another council, but I think we had a special meeting to hear from all the people sitting in the table.
Right.
You got forty-five minutes?
Yes.
So why don't we let them talk?
Yes.
We can just let them give us whatever they want to give us, and then we can discuss other points.
Well, we just try to write the parameters of the discussion.
Okay.
Uh, speaking to, my name's Charlie Ackerman, a real estate broker. I specialize in student housing on the west side of Binghamton and downtown in particular. Uh, the functional family is something that we kind of run in fear of constantly, and we've kind of set up a, almost a con, an unspoken kind of rule that we don't cross Chestnut Street. Uh, because the functional family has been enforced on Lincoln, on Neittown, and a couple of other places, kind of the not, the, you know, the not dog wink wink was, we won't enforce it over here because we have such high density. It will only be used as a tool to remove problem houses, which, you know, we've gone along with because we really have no choice, but the truth of the matter is, is our entire, you know, there's three hundred properties between Chestnut and Oak Street and Ayers and North Street that are student housing right now, that are technically within, you know, I'm not going to say whether they are or are not within functional family, but certainly could be questionable. And, uh, as student housing landlords that I, that I represent, we just want rules, we just want a zone, we just want to say we can do our business here. You know, the university itself, we have some seven thousand kids that live off campus. Uh, there's some three thousand of them plus that live on the west side of Binghamton, and we just want to have, create safe, you know, tidy little areas where we won't have problems with the neighbors. You know, if we need rules that, that, uh, that speak about parking, if we need rules that speak about garbage, if we have rules that speak about certificates of compliance, if we have rules, whatever, we just want to operate a business that is crucial to the Binghamton economy in a place that we can do that.
Mr. Ackerman, can you, from your own experience, why don't you tell us the area in the west side where, where student housing is concentrated and how that differs from the current C6 overlay?
Well, student housing is sprinkled throughout the west side and sprinkled throughout the south side, but our real critical mass is between Chestnut and Front Street, uh, Ayers to North Street. Uh, that is our largest chunk, and then downtown Binghamton, uh, which is, you know, pretty much from Carroll to the river, from, you know, to the Shenango River, from the Suez Huahana River to the railroad tracks. Uh, that is ninety-eight percent of what we do. You know, there's certainly some stuff on Handel and Schubert and Laurel and so on, but that is less demand, student housing, and that is, uh, a lot of people come to town and they think, oh, I'm going to be a student housing landlord, they buy out Schubert Street, uh, do what they will. But, uh, what we would really like to, you know, well, that's a, to answer your question, but we'd really like to see is just to define a place where we can function our business without fear of the functional family law. This way we can open up to certificates of compliance, you know, come on in, look at our properties right now. We sit the code guy, we're like, please don't come in my house, I'm afraid, but we want to be good landlords, we want to have safe properties, we want to comply with the city, but right now we operate in gray market.
And I can ask for...
Is it improbable to operate your places in dwelling units of less than three individuals' space?
It's just, that's just not the way that the kids live, that's not the way that these structures exist.
Because that would give you guaranteed, guarantee you pretty much safety from...
Sure, but there's absolutely zero profit that can be had from three bedrooms, so it's just not, there is no market.
Well, I think there's profits if you had, the question is how much profit you're getting out of it.
There's not profit to be, I, I, as a real estate broker...
So if you had, if you had a five unit, three bedrooms each, it's fifteen people, five hundred dollars a bedroom?
It's not what the kids are requesting. The kids like to live...
The young adults.
They, sorry. The young adults. Uh, they like to live with five or six of their friends, and...
Actually, what we've been saying is more like twenty, thirty, twenty-five.
Well, that's in the bigger units though, I'm talking about, most of the ones are residential houses within the...
That's already across the north area. They wouldn't be affected by this whatsoever.
There's a couple on Oak Street, there's a couple on Murray Street.
Still commercial...
On Murray Street.
No.
Yes, he's been in it.
Have you been in a twenty-bed of Murray?
I've been in a lot of multi, over the limit, yeah. There's like five, six units in there, four, four or five beds per unit, and all over the place, yeah.
But a four or five unit, two, three bedrooms a unit, is different than a twenty-bed.
It's also different from the two bedroom that it's supposed to be.
I mean, you know, I think that that is a violation of the zoning already, and what we want to do is we want to set parameters for what is legal. Tell us what we can do legally. Let us operate within the guise of the law so that we don't end up with chopped up cob of places. Let's say, okay, you, this, this business, there's demand for a business like this here in Binghamton. This pays a lot of tax revenue, and the kids, the, the young adults spend a lot of money in our community and have helped with the rebirth of downtown, certainly, and the front street corridor around Front and Main, this has come back to life because of the dollars spent by students. And, uh, let's encourage this.
It's primarily the development that was done through, actually through, legitimately done through legitimate site plans, legitimate zoning authorities, not so much the...
We took a house and chopped it up.
We have, we have unscrupulous landlords, you know that, whether they be student housing or whether they be affordable housing, there's landlords there that, uh, try to play under the radar. Uh, and for one thing, when you talk about taxes, uh, you have, when you have a, a five-bedroom or a six-bedroom house that's in a, one of the districts now, and you're operating a, a commercial business for your sake, because you're renting it for, uh, you know, for that many, for that many people, but you're paying a homestead tax rate, you agree that that should change also?
I don't disagree.
Can I put it this way? We, right now, every landlord in the west side is functioning illegally, whether they've gone and got variances or not. My biggest concern is to make sure, let every landlord have it be legal, and then we can go through and see who got the variances, who did not, what variances need to be changed, and what can be done.
It's not, it's not, they may be illegal, is the question.
Yeah, but we don't know.
A lot of them aren't legal over there.
But...
A lot more are legal over there, they've gotten proper approvals, they've gotten the proper variance if they've gone through...
It's still legal, though, they have more than three people in them, what we're trying to do is to stream that.
Not if they got the proper approvals, it's not illegal.
No, it's, it's... So I'm not going to argue that, but I am going to say that I, as a real estate broker, for almost a decade in this area, have sold the same buildings three times, but have had seven beds in the house for the past decade, and the guy buys the place with full anticipation, gets his certificate of compliance, because I can't complete a transaction without a certificate of compliance, does all the things that they're supposed to do, and they think that their functioning is business. And I tell every single person I sell the property to, well, there's a weird gray area called the functional family law that the city could come down on, and I'm just saying, can we just, for the sake of keeping an economy going, just say, you already have existed in this business for near twenty years doing this exact thing, in this exact location, can we say the functional family will not apply? If you wish to put extra parameters on there where they need a certificates of compliance that say that they're safe and that there's no third floor, last thing that we want is a third floor bedroom, but if a fire breaks out, that some kid gets hurt, because that's very bad for business. We want safe, clean, we don't want any sort of blight issues.
Frankly, that's what some of this legislation meant to address, because it's not...
Exactly, going back to April seventeenth of two thousand thirteen, a permanent ordinance was passed by the city of Binghamton establishing a rental registration process to ensure that all residential properties are safe, habitable, and compliant with building...
And what happened is, half of the landlords, I think you did too, including Charlie here, did that, they complied. The other half that is breaking the law currently did not, and everybody who paid, the money went into contingency and they will never be able to get that money back. We want to make sure that does not happen again.
Why? This was rolled out...
Because it wasn't done correctly.
And then not enforced.
It was not done correctly.
So it is in, it is on the law, so it is on the books, it is in existence.
And it fell. And it fell. I would love to get another one going, I really think that we need to get everything legal and say, let's stop fighting about three bedroom versus four bedroom or five bedroom, let's start just saying, right now, this part, this area, this small area right here is not zoned correctly, it's zoned as an R2 and an R3, which is a lie, because it is not, it is not zoned like that right now.
So, uh, and...
Let me ask one question here. If it's, if we go to a C6, uh, legislation for this area, would that, is that a, a light commercial area?
It's a commercial residential, which means they have to keep up with all the aesthetics of all the residents with the historic functioning, and it's all written in it already. They cannot do anything that goes through, it has to be set with the historic integrity of the community, we cannot destroy it however they want, and it, they literally have to follow it, and it's, it is put in like that. As for the parking, if you have only three, if, if somebody buys a home and there's only enough parking for three rooms, and they cannot acquire parking anywhere else, then they're not going to be able to do anything but three rooms.
And, and in the interest of moving things forward, I think, I think we all agree that there need to be, uh, rules that are enforceable, I think that we're all generally supportive of, of the C6, and we're, and we're going to move forward without getting too talking about it, but in the interest of moving forward, why don't we even move on to Rebecca? Uh, students, the dominant conversation, and they, they're certainly important in the account of lifeblood in the community, but affordable housing is really critical, so what can we take back to the planning department and talk about our zoning in terms of promoting affordable housing in the community? I think you did some research on that, so I'd love to hear.
Sure, and, uh, most of the research that was put together by myself and the Safe Housing Task Force, actually all of it was emailed to council members, so that's certainly something that you can reference, but what we know is that we have a deficit of seven thousand one hundred and forty units that are affordable and available to extremely low income renters. So that means that for every, I mentioned this in the public comment at the hearing, for every one hundred extremely low income renters in the room county, there are only seventeen that are affordable and available units. Where we see the opposite of that, and why I do come at it from a different perspective, is that conversely, we see that we have already, and the data is contrary, the county housing study for the government housing agency in twenty seventeen identifies that we have met market demand effectively, if not exceeded, at first student housing, and that once the adaptive reviews and protocols projects on the table right now are completed, we will have effectively met market demand for luxury housing. Um, so I certainly bring the voice of, we need affordable housing for existing residents who are considered extremely low income and very low income.
Rebecca, I just want to ask you, with that seventy-one hundred and forty units of affordable deficit housing, how do you come up with that number?
So the National Low Income Housing Coalition does a nationwide gap analysis using HUD's affordability definitions. So for HUD, if housing is affordable, occupants are spending no more than thirty percent of their monthly income on rent.
Interested, for this area, what is that?
The thirty percent?
Yeah.
So it's by scale in terms of size of households, but, um, for, say, a single mom with two young kids, that they're making no more than twenty-one thousand dollars annually.
So their affordable monthly rent would be...
Somewhere around five twenty-five, um, between four seventy-five and six twenty-five, depending on the household, but we see an average in Brum County closer to eight hundred for units that are affordable for families that need, need more than one bedroom. So what we have, the thousands, just about eight thousand extremely low income renters.
Yeah, so that would be subsidized housing, because a lot of these, uh, over, under eight hundred dollars, uh, for, for an investor, to get less than eight hundred dollars for a, for a two or three bedroom, they won't be able to make any money.
And there are, there are certainly recommend, uh, recommendations, and I've got one in particular here that we can talk through, that there are ways to support developers that are interested in providing affordable housing, um, certainly ways to increase rental assistance that's available through subsidies, it's used extremely broadly, but that breaks down into several different levels of programs that are available to extremely low income renters, um, and we have a plethora of rental assistance available throughout the region. The number one barrier, um, for example, for families that are experiencing homelessness and ready, they're ready to exit shelter, is actually identifying an available unit for them to occupy. Um, that's where quality comes into it as well, um, and we've had extensive conversations at the Brum County Safe Housing Task Force level regarding that rental registration, so there are options within, um, that's, if, there's, uh, so there's a, a recommendation specifically within the task force, uh, the profile and policy recommendations that address that in particular as well, details as to why it wasn't, why it was rolled out the way that it is, why it's not effectively implemented currently, um, and those were all conversations that we had, Chris Leiter a part of, Sharon Sorkin a part of, Mayor Data a part of, so a, a high level discussion has already happened, and we've compiled it into recommendations very specifically to the zoning code overhaul. Um, I have two sections to reference and then kind of a follow-up recommendation. Um, I'll start with, and this one is somewhat unrelated to the broader conversation, but with temporary structure, so this would be section four ten five, with temporary structure being defined as any structure which is erected in place, um, for not more than six months, no issue with the recommendation, what I want to point out is that while I agree that no human being should be left to occupy a temporary structure, which is very specifically clarified in the new regulation, I'm curious if there's written protocols regarding what law enforcement or code would follow if they do identify an unsheltered individual who's temporarily occupying a tent where occupancy is no longer permitted, very specifically in the regulations. If there's not written protocol, that we have to collaborate to talk through kind of what to do with that unsheltered individual, um, and the...
Greg, do, what would, what would you do now, or what would, what is our protocol now in that sort of situation?
To this line of knowledge, I mean, that, I mean, this hasn't come up hardly ever in, in the year or so that I've been in this own house, but, um, if it was on a house or on a property with established houses and so forth, you would talk to the landlord or, or the owner of the house, and work to know that, that individual can't live, so they would have to move into the household, or they're on another house, and if it goes on city property, then it's my assumption that we would have to remove that.
There's no, yeah, there's no...
Which is the protocol that we should talk about? Makes sense, but I'm just saying for...
You're, you're saying, you're saying that's good practice to kind of, right, or you're saying that there, that there's something that we're doing wrong, or...
I'm not saying that there's something that anyone is doing wrong, I just want to make sure that there's protocol, and that there's contact information.
Especially to that, especially to that, especially to older folks, or people who need care, we call them, adult protective services to accompany, so they can go to do an eviction or to go to, remove them from the premises, if that's warranted. A couple situations, we've had to do search warrants for houses that were mostly trash and garbage or like the order type situations, maybe acts, action for older people, or adult protective services or social services to accompany us. They usually get placed in new, you know, new horizons, generally, or there's other places, that was years ago, so that may not change.
And that, no, and that's okay, and you don't have to spend a ton of time on it, it's kind of off the larger subject, just wanted to make sure that that's something that's being, that that's something that's...
Well, I'd like to hear, finish your recommendations.
Sure, so, um, specifically, so when we talk about the incredible deficit that we have in affordable housing for the lowest income folks, and I'll add, um, we throw around low and moderate income a lot, there are a number of proposals and projects that have been built for low to moderate income households. What we need though is that lowest income strata, um, so, and that's the highest deficit, that's the most significant gap that we have, and so my recommendation would be to incentivize affordable housing development in the way that I would recommend doing so. Uh, section four ten, forty-eight, there's a justification section that the planning commission, as far as review protocols, um, when modifications to development are requested. So I would recommend simply adding, and I'll read it, but I can certainly send this simple helpful applications proposing to reserve no less than fifteen percent of residential units for affordable occupancy to households making below fifty percent of the Binghamton and, this is just MSA, area median income, shall be considered sufficiently justified for the authorization of any modifications for similar limitations above. So where the bulk maximum, um, adjustment is identified, where the off-site parking maximum adjustment is identified, all valid, all still well within the protocols, it's been adjusted within the regulation or within the legislation, um, but what essentially we would be doing is applications that are committing to reserving no less than fifteen percent of their development to extremely low income or very low income populations would receive those modifications justified off the back.
Will you move on to the next?
Yeah, uh, I want to, or one more thing from, yes, Charlie?
And I...
I just have a, uh, it, it's commonly talked about, this, uh, this study of where student housing is, and I, I can say soundly it is incorrect, it is not true. I am a specialist in this market, property values are rising, rents are rising year after year, our vacancy rate is near zero on student housing. If that was even close to correct, we would be seeing lower rents, and we would be seeing lower property values as well as vacancy rates. Right now, I'm in contact with landlords that have upwards of, you know, collectively between all the landlords that I work with, probably about two, three thousand beds worth of student housing, of which I know one building right now that is running an absolute vacancy. Uh, if we are anywhere near our capacity, that would not be true, and I don't know, I certainly wasn't reached out to for this study, even though I do sell a huge amount of student housing, but it is not correct, and I just would like to, to say that. Now, I'm not saying that we need to start building like crazy, and what we need is more and more student housing, because we don't. We do need housing for other groups, uh, but with that said, I have trouble with that, and have had trouble with that since the study came out, and have reached out to the agency about it, to note reply, but it is not factual.
Okay. One more, one more recommendation?
Just one more quick, and so, uh, this wouldn't be specific to the legislation though, but if we're revising zoning, zoning ordinances, it would be an opportunity to strengthen enforcement capacity by creating an administrative adjudication bureau. So, um, I mean, our current civil approaches to code noncompliance are lengthy, they're ineffective, um, that comes into play somewhat with the rental registration as well, and it not being implemented, um, I think the recommendations, certainly from the task force broadly, the specific to the city of Binghamton, is could be to consider an administrative adjudication bureau, um, which makes that, rather than a civil process, it's an administrative process for code violations, so it's a quicker, more effective process. City of Syracuse, um, Rochester has also implemented that this, it would take, A, and we've got the specific legislation that I can send, but it would take a proposal to the governor's office, um, and it really would probably need to be a Senator Hackshaw or Senator Lemon-Lapardo proposal that mimics the Syracuse proposal that was approved, but it can be done, and so, so mimicking it in that way to strengthen code enforcement's capacity to actually move these violation proceedings over.
And what happens is a lot of the times, the code department goes after someone and they can get stuck in court for like months, if not over a year, and all their landlord has to do is as soon as they get ready to go in the court, they go, they mow the lawn or do whatever it was, pick up the garbage, the judge dismisses them, but then by the next week, it's right back where it was. If we have it in administration, they can take care of it a lot faster, I agree with that.
I'd like to hear from, uh, Russell Maines over there, because you said you had, you came up with a plan for Ithaca?
Yes.
And, uh, we haven't really seen anything, and I was kind of hoping you would have sent us something.
I did get a chance to review it, there is some questions, um, I think once we get the C6 in, in line, it would be, but, um, I also know that Ithaca, they have, the Cornell College has its own college community, which is gated from the rest of the community, so the issues are different than what we have in Binghamton, the residents living in here, a lot of the students living with the residents, um, and there's some, also some things, I think it could be doable, but we'd have to go over it, because there's things that aren't, but then there's things that we could build on.
Well, I, I haven't heard.
Yeah, can I hear what the... Yes, I, I did, thank, I sent, I did send something that I drafted, I drafted about seven years ago for the city of Ithaca, I sent it to the corporation council's office. If, if, oh, okay. If you, my, my web, my email address is russ@ithaca dot legal, so if any of you want to communicate with me directly, I will respond to you, I'll copy the corporation council, so they're in the loop, but, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That actually came to Jess, who supported us, so I'm going to ask the lead to forward it to you guys.
Sure. Okay, great. And what, what I, what I drafted, it was never passed by the city of Ithaca, although informally they have adopted something. And the idea, so much of what I'm hearing is, is, is similar to Ithaca. You have problems that are associated with transient residents who tend not to know each other, and when you don't know who's in the house next door, who's causing the problem, there tends to be less communication... tends to be less communication between the property owners. And people tend to deal with their problems rather than communicating with each other to go, to use essentially the zoning department or the building department as the enforcement. That's very inefficient, it wears them down. And I think there are better ways using cheaply and effectively, basically using technology we already have, text messaging, emails, and registered agency, where property owners can communicate with each other, and if they fail to get a response, then they can involve the city. So what I drafted is essentially a way to deal with that. Again, if you send me an email, I will respond and give you a copy of what I drafted. But so much of the theory of the functional family unit legislation, when it was created back in the late sixties and the early seventies, was cities wanted to try to preserve the character of the neighborhoods. And historically that was done, the problem was that your functional, traditional family was falling apart. And they tried to craft this sort of fiction, try to force people to live together as families. But in my opinion, it doesn't really work. There are better ways, I think, to correct these problems. I'm looking at the West Side homeowners concerns, there were some things I disagree with, but most of what I'm seeing on that page, having to deal with property maintenance and maintenance of the sidewalks, noise issues, student problems. My clients or the landlords agree with that stuff. They don't want these problems, they don't want the city annoyed. We do think in terms of the specifics, we would like to adjust the boundaries of the C six district to include Air Street, Chestnut Street, War Street. We agree actually with keeping the maximum bedroom count relatively low, not three, but we think eight is the ideal number. As it just indicated, we'd like to modernize the codoer for garbage and exterior property maintenance issues. And so really my function here is I'm trying to do what you folks are doing, I'm trying to listen to what people are saying, and I'm hoping that I can work with your corporation council's office to try to come up with something that would work for as many people as possible. And all that being said, I think the idea is to keep, you want more people in your city, but you don't want the problems that come with, that I've been talking about. You want to increase your population density in a safe way, and you want to know who's there and how many people are there. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. I don't want to interrupt, take too much time. I just explained where the functional family comes from, I think Russell probably confirmed it. It comes from a case called in Minby, Oyster Bay, in which the city of Oyster Bay was trying to keep a group home for young adults moving into a residential neighborhood. They were trying to say, this is a single family, this is not a family, doesn't meet the definition of a family. And it was kind of a bad approach for Oyster Bay to take in the first place, and went all the way up to the Court of Appeals, which is the highest court in New York State. And the Court of Appeals created this definition. If you read their, if you read the decision in Minby, Oyster Bay, almost all the factors that are listed in our statute were lifted directly from that decision. And it got codified, it was very popular in like the late seventies, late, actually late eighties, where almost all these communities adopted these functional family laws to essentially conform themselves to the functional family definition given out in Minby, Oyster Bay. You'll find also, if you do some research, there's a bunch of cases in about the ten years after that, where different communities said, we don't like this group, because all it says is a group of individuals, so this doesn't give you a number. So it creates this uncertainty, is it one, two, three, four? What point do you cross? Two is a couple, so that's pretty easy. You cross from two to three, you go into conceivably a group. And so there's a number. So people started to try to plot the number, is it four, is it five, is it six? Those all get struck down. And so we came up with a novel solution for the city. The city said, we're not going to apply it on commercial districts, because, which gave us some flexibility. This is an attempt to go further, and really I have to tell you, proposed zoning is not meant, it addresses student housing. But it's not with, I don't want to say the target, because no one's really the target. The real issue is boarding houses and rooming houses, which is very different than student housing. It looks very similar and operates very similarly, but it's a very different now. When you have fifteen students living together, one thing, fifteen people who are wholly unrelated, have no connections whatsoever, they have individuals locked in their doors, under their house, that's another, listen, fifteen people living together, they act differently as a group. They can be very aggressive towards their neighbors and like very defiant towards their neighborhood, which is sort of what we get in the bad student housing, which is not everything, probably about five percent of student housing. But the rooming houses, typically, just my opinion, totally anecdotal, it seems to be driven by a lot of people who are coming out of rehab or they're coming out of other recovery programs, and they need a place to stay. And the only place they can afford is the four or five hundred bedrooms for apartment, a single room apartment where they share their rooming thing. And that's a rooming house or boarding house. We're finding an obscene number of houses being converted into that type of structure. Which on the good hand, it provides housing for people who need it. On the bad hand is, there's no firearms sprinklers, there's no second means of address, there's no pub fire safety, there's been no review of the plants, it's done illegally, and it's just a matter of time until there's a fire and ten or fifteen people die because they painted out of the place.
That transience is as equally attributable to the quality of housing itself. I mean, it's not just that they have high needs and that they are, that they would benefit from the support in that housing in order to maintain it and move forward, but the quality of that housing, very often we see it driving the transience, because they can't stay.
Something anecdotally is, they're in recovery and they get put in a house that has ten other recovering addicts who are not doing very well at it, and they're like, I want to get out of here because I don't want to relax, I don't want to go back. Or there's a lot of that going on. So the thing is that, this is not a thing that's unique to the city of Binghamton. There's a New York secretary of state, I believe, they did a study on zoning and code enforcement, and one of the top four issues they found all across the state, and what a community looked at was the proliferation of illegal conversions to rooming houses.
And can you give us a definition, that if you say that it's not students that we're targeting and it's not so, and can we get a definition that allows us to operate our business? We're willing to make, we don't even need ten bedrooms.
The definition is the sixty-six percent density.
Right. I'm saying we don't even need ten bedrooms, eight bedrooms is all the landlord ever wants to touch.
The eight bedrooms are actually for the north of Main area where we do have boarding houses, and that's why I put in anything eight to ten bedroom has to have supervision, because we do have boarding houses that are not supervised right now, and I wholly feel there should be supervision.
I'm with it, but I'm just saying if it's not the target, if the legislative, I'm not going to sit here and argue that it's a ten.
But it's not, it's not the sole focus, not the sole focus, it's part of the issue.
But right now, so you say this, and you know, we've operated without very much problem whatsoever, because we aren't a target, but the thing is, if the winds blow a different direction and an administration comes in or a different, you know, code officer, then all of a sudden, our business that was built on, you know, our business is built on nothing but sand at this point, and this is something that is concrete and vital to the economy, can you please codify us in law and say that we exist, we are here, we serve a function for our community?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of issues with doing that.
Are you still staying in the gray?
Well, to some extent, the gray is not something the city created. A lot of the places that are functioning, the way you're saying, were legally converted, maybe twenty years ago. They were never done with proper rules, they never had proper building plans, they never had proper building plans, they were just done, they existed that way. Second of all, I agree with you entirely, and everyone is functional, functional family is a very decrepit way of enforcing it. For the rare fact is, every time I prosecute a group, they come to the zoning board of appeals, it's like a two-month process, zoning board makes a decision, that group of students or that group of individuals moves out, and then I have to go and develop a case against the next group, because there's no, it's entirely inefficient. Everybody agrees.
But in the new definition of the functional family, it also says permanent, which is further a hammer that hits us in the head. In your new legislation, the new definition of functional family, the last word is permanent, which by definition is not student housing. That student housing is meant to be for a short term while the kid is in school, so no, I disagree. I don't think that we can be, you know, don't worry about it, it's going to be fine, we can't. We have millions and millions of dollars tied up in this area that has revitalized, there are three properties in this proposed area that we're talking about, at least south of Main, that are vacant right now. Three properties, no light, no boarded up, no, we got one on the corner of Walnut and Seminary, we have, and then we have the Giuseppe's Pizza, and there's one other that I can't remember.
I know, he's one of the clients, and it's represented by, and so what I'm saying
is this neighborhood is vital and is vibrant because of student housing, please just let us exist, tell us we're allowed.
Let me ask you one question, if you have a six-bedroom house, which some of these are large homes on the West Side, and they were very conducive to student housing, but if you have a four to five or six-bedroom large home, and someone buys it and goes and makes it into a ten-bedroom home.
Should it be legal?
It should be legal?
Illegal.
Illegal. I think, because this is the problem that's happening, that's why you have the high density, the parking problems, the noise problems and everything else, is because if they've done this. So if you have a six-bedroom house, you want to rent, I don't know, twelve people, I think that should be legitimate, but to take a six-bedroom house and make it into a eight or ten-bedroom house, I think that's a grossly problematic.
We don't want all that to happen. It's difficult to sell these units.
That's not the case, though. I think there's a lot of misconceptions about the student housing and that they're taking these houses that used to have four or five bedrooms and made them eight, nine, ten bedrooms.
They have done that.
Often.
Well, the majority of that rental stock.
They haven't taken, they convert, put new bedrooms, but what used to be a library is now a bedroom. What used to be the pantry is now a bedroom, what used to be a large walk-in closet is now a bedroom.
These bedrooms rent for a lot of money.
Yes, no.
And we try to market them, we try to market them to compete with the new development in downtown Binghamton, which means that we have to make them nice. We cannot just cob-job these things and jam every square inch into a bedroom. Yes, there are many places over the years that have been done poorly, and those are the landlords that we would like to see exit the market. We do not, they do not compete well, those are the guys that get beat up and have to lower their rent and lower their rent because they have garbage product. The market is acting and strongly, and the market says that I can't just take every square inch and turn it into a bedroom, or else I will not have a viable product. So no, I agree, I don't think that they should be able to chop them up. And as far as parking, this particular neighborhood is very dense, a lot of those lots do not have even driveways, a number, a great number of them do not even have driveways.
The entire neighborhood you described is the old EJ, and EJ, Mr. Johnson did not support cars or vehicles, so he purposely needed them to cut them up to the point where he could not put car storage on the lot.
I think that better answers to these things, I think that better answers to these things are thinking about parking permits or thinking about, you know, other ways that we can decrease the number, there's fantastic.
The parking permit process is, goes to the state legislature, you can't do that unless.
And we already have parking going, the parking going in though will change it, so anything coming in after that won't be able to have them, because they won't be able to have the parking for it.
I do want to make sure we cover a number of different topics here, so now that we're talking about parking, I think it's worth mentioning and talking about the criticism of parking proposals and the zoning changes. For example, you know, in downtown Binghamton, you have a lot of apartments that are four, five, six bedroom units, whether it's students or young professionals living there. With the proposed zoning change, you know, any of those apartments, if they're new, wouldn't be able to exist because you can't, you can't, you have to have onsite parking. And I think that that is probably going to really be a stein to development. Page sixty-five, Greg. So that, Greg, what it says is, any use in the R one or R two districts, any building or structure containing dwelling units with four or five bedrooms, or any congregate living facilities in any district. So that basically means anywhere in the city with four or more bedrooms, you have to have onsite parking. And considering that, I think we have a council that wants to create a more vibrant, walkable city that isn't as reliant on cars, especially downtown Binghamton, where there are just places where you can't build a parking lot on property.
I don't take it related to downtown, because you've got parking ramps.
It absolutely does.
Is downtown?
Yes, if I want to, if I want to redevelop the building and create affordable housing, you know, in, on Carol Street, but I can't create a parking lot right there because of how dense the neighborhood is, I can't use a public parking facility across the street because it crosses a public right of way to, so that development would be illegal.
And then we can keep parking.
It would be illegal unless you have a variance.
Yeah, but that doesn't sound like good.
Which is a huge concern of the West Side property owners, is will people be allowed to go just get a variance and get around.
The problem is that with the zoning statute, they're always allowed to get a variance.
We don't have enough parking now.
No, I understand.
When Auburn Street parking starts, it's a nightmare.
I know.
And so now you're going to open up to bring more bedrooms in, to the dense areas.
But that would be something that would be a factor, that would be people who have the show, the planning.
The parking would also, the parking takes care of that, the parking laws we're putting in takes care of that. You have to use, anything new coming in would have to be used the designed parking area it has, which means if you only have enough room for three cars, then you're only going to make three rooms.
But the zoning process allows you to vary what's called the bulk requirement, the area requirement, because it's a parking requirement. So that if you were to propose a project and you didn't meet your parking, you can go to the zoning board, so listen, I can't provide the zoning that's required, I'm going to provide seventy-five, eighty, ninety percent of what you're requiring me to.
But we also put in parking spots, there's a whole bunch of various places that can have parking lots.
And those get varied as well.
We also have landlords that have students with no cars, we have landlords with students with cars, why are they not sharing, and why are our kids not parking in the driveway to begin with? I live on the West Side, ninety percent of those kids don't even use the driveway.
Because they don't want to move their cars into the house.
Well, do them that.
It's not specific to individuals, it's specific to the project. And having it controlled based on the fact that this particular individual, certainly is very poor planning, you want to design the product, no matter who lives there for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, what effect is it going to have on that neighborhood?
Which is where the type of product, the product would come in and that justification process.
Because this landlord may be very good, but the next one may not be.
The extremely low income population overlaps pretty significantly with the population that doesn't have private transportation. So they're not utilizing, I mean, so this wouldn't, not to say that this wouldn't be an issue, but that modification applying to a reduction of fifty percent, you're not going to see that concern with affordable housing development.
Well, you could tie it into, just a suggestion that's off the top of my head, I haven't thought it through, nor am I writing it by the planning department, which we should, is that you could tie some kind of variance as to parking in proportion to the amount that you reserve for low income folks.
Oh, I'm suggesting we tie it all in, that's all.
So that if you provided so much low income housing, you would get a waiver of one, two, three spots apart, or something like that.
I don't know what those numbers would be, what they would look like.
Can you send us that specifically, that blacked out language that you shared with us?
There is permit parking in city Binghamton, in High Street, on High Street, it can't be stretched out, you have to.
It went, no, when you do that, when we did that, you had to go to the state legislature, you had to define very specifically what your neighborhood was.
Okay, but if we have defined C six, then.
You had to delineate exactly why you needed it, and it had to take, it took us two years to get it to the state legislature. It's not, and quite frankly, I don't think it's been all that successful.
But this is something we can start with, the C six is just a start. There's a whole bunch of things we need to fix, but we can't fix any of it until we fix the zone, the late zone, because it's not R two and R three. All I'm asking is to fix that, we have a whole bunch of things we need to fix moving forward, I'm not saying that we don't mind what we do, but we can't move forward until we get this started.
Do you have anything left to share with us? I think, you know, our next step in the process will be speaking with the planning department, obviously, you know, we didn't vote on this, we didn't pass it, so there's any and every opportunity for us to add things into the code, for us to, you know, add in C six, for us to talk about the parking. But we'd love to hear, you know, in the final few minutes, if you have any final comments that you want us to consider as we move forward.
I do want to reiterate for Congress here about development in downtown Binghamton, you know, I've never gotten the invite from Mayor David's house, but, you know, his property would not be able to be built, his home wouldn't be able to be built according to this new zoning regulation. And I think that just speaks to just how, you know, two hundred and fifty feet from the development, you can't cross a public right of way, and we have two large parking ramps, one of which is severely underutilized. I think that it's a market question, and I know that people do contribute. I, I think that it's a market question, and I know that people do complain about parking in downtown Binghamton frequently, but in comparison to other city cores, I think that our parking is very reasonable, and I think that anything, right now in C2, zero parking requirement, and if I, you know, I've done a number of developments in downtown with my clients, and if I do not have the parking that works, then I do not have the same marketable product, and if we're building something, then, then potentially, the, the price has to be different, maybe it's an unbuildable place if I can't provide enough parking for it, but I don't see how this puts any additional pressure, just one slight variation.
In the C2, parking is required for new construction, that's what held up 20 Holly Street's building on the five and floors behind, it's adaptive reuse of existing buildings that doesn't require parking.
That's 99.9% of what we do in downtown Binghamton, and that is what has turned our downtown, I lived in Binghamton for 12 years now, when I moved here, downtown was not what it is, and we've worked very hard in the development community to make it what it is, and this could not have been done if this legislation were in effect 10 years ago.
A lot of those, a lot of the apartments do have parking next to the downtown.
When I did a property at 229 State Street, where we redeveloped what were three vacant floors for, I mean, they were vacant for, you know, five years, we redeveloped it, and, you know, there is no parking requirement, so we didn't include it in our site plan, but we have a very large lot across the street from it, that we rent spaces to kids to, and, or young adults, I'm sorry, and, but that would cross a public right-of-way. Now, I could throw a football from the front door to the parking lot, but that would not meet the bulk requirement, and that's just-
So let me ask you a question, instead of crossing the right-of-way, or is it 250 feet that's issued?
250 feet would be almost impossible for 90% of the developments, but I'm speaking to this particular one on its own, is the fact that it's across a public right-of-way, and speaks to, and with all deference and respect, the absurdity of this. You know, I can see it, it's right there, but it's not going to meet the bulk requirements, even though it's one of the rare properties that does have the opportunity to have parking, but would not meet the bulk requirement to do what we do, and in that building, we built two, three, and four-bedroom apartments. We wanted to keep the numbers low, because that is more popular, but the four bedrooms are what make it profitable as a whole, and without being able to have four-bedroom and five-bedroom apartments, we don't want eight, nobody wants a six, a seven, an eight, a 10 in downtown, it just doesn't happen, but without that, you know, fours and fives, the building doesn't become viable.
So what I would add, as we talk about revitalization, is that we saw a 200% increase in the density of Binghamton after the development of downtown center, and that's primarily due to the initial affordable housing, and the displacement of individuals that reside here, but at that time, we continue to see increases in housing instability and homelessness in the city of Binghamton upwards of 40% in recent years, and until revitalization, of course, is a cool thing, economic strategies to improve, and of course, it's a cool thing, but we do need to prioritize the households that currently reside in the city of Binghamton that have resided, and that may be within that lowest income strata, they, of course, you have to talk online, but we must certainly argue the profit margin shouldn't be the priority.
Rick, that said, I was part of the redevelopment of the Windermere, which was exactly the problem, you know, type of property that she's talking about, there were 50 SROs, single-room occupancies in there, that provided a lot of low-income housing, and I can say, there was a massive amount of police calls that happened in that, the place was terrifying, and under fair management, you know, the guy was halfway decent in there, but it is very difficult to manage a 50-room SRO with any sort of comfort, and that was redeveloped into student housing, causing, you know, putting further pressure on extreme low-income housing.
I don't know if that would be extreme low incomes, when you're talking about SROs.
We gotta wrap this up here, because we have, do have a council meeting, so we can have another meeting, when, would you like to perform the next?
Yeah, I think, I think at the next meeting, we, we'll meet with, with Tito and the planning department, and, and take what we heard today, and, and see how we can, you know, add into the legislation, so.
All right.
We can talk about it at the end of the, at the end of our city council meeting, or now.
Sure, we can have another meeting, be another, I don't know, if we're gonna have Tito and them down there, I'll take, we need an hour.
Yeah, it could be.
We could do, again, before, before our meeting in the 18th.
Let's check with, with Tito before.
Yeah, but let's check with Tito first, and we can do that, see if we can schedule one for the, the next meeting on Monday. So we're gonna end this meeting, so we can get into our city council meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming, we are listening to everything you're saying, and taking notes, and everybody else is taking notes too.
Thank you, write it down, and, yes, thank you.
Thank you. And if you have any, you know, written input, specific considerations that you want to add, and that you mentioned today, please send them to us, either through the city clerk or from other.
Yeah, if you send them to our city clerk, go get them, that's for sure, that'd be nice to hear, and I want to thank everybody for coming again, so.
Thank you very much for having me.
You're welcome, thank you for coming, like I said, we enjoyed listening.
You can always reach us, if you have anything else to add, besides the-
Sure, I'm sure of that.
Actually, should we take a motion?
Motion, adjourn.
Yep.
We're adjourned.